Hello, I think everybody wants to get to a game tonight, so let's get started. Welcome to our Wednesday, November second, two thousand and twenty-two Exeter Township School District's special board voting meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Hey, Mr. Pike, can you take roll call, please?
Dr. Anne Herring.
Present.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Andrew Battler. Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Jason Mill.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter. Julie Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor Sharon Montaine and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristy Haller, superintendent. This is Dawn Harris, Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Eric Lamb, Director of Teaching and Learning. This is Diane Skornabaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Pike, who serves as our Business Administrator, as well as our Board Secretary. Okay, we will not be amending the agenda tonight, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Haller.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. I would like to give this opportunity to, first of all... Welcome Awatton Creek, who is in the house, which is very fitting for the video that we're going to be showing. And the stars of the video I see here in the audience, I'm just disappointed that they didn't dress up as witches as we saw them last week. But again, I wanted to thank Awatton Creek for being here and their principal, Mr. Charlie Payne. I also wanted to take this opportunity to share with the community information about a series of budget workshop meetings that began in October and will continue through the month of March with the possibility of adding a date in April. Each meeting is scheduled at one of our buildings. And the purpose of that is to provide the community, the board, whoever is able to come, with a tour of the building so that they can see the building and the capital projects that we are going to be discussing. The topics that we are basing each meeting on have been carefully selected to align with the budget timeline outlined by the state. The administration and the school board of directors welcomes, of course, public input. And we are really encouraging everyone to, or if you can, come to these meetings each month. However, we understand if we can't, and we still want to be able to provide for the public information about what is occurring. So, thank you to Jen Breton, who created on our webpage a button here that says "Budget Workshops", and if Sheldon, who's in the closet, could click on that. You will see that there'll be in this webpage the agendas for each of the meetings, where the meetings are held, the PowerPoint that was presented at each meeting, along with an outline of what was discussed. So, our first meeting occurred at the junior high, and you will see on this page an outline of what was the important highlights of the meeting, and then also the PowerPoint that was presented to the individuals who attended. So, I'd like to thank Stephen Biggerstaff for being part of that, Alex Brown, who is the junior high principal. Stephen Biggerstaff is our Director of Facilities, and he will be at each one of them, leading the tour portion. And then our building principal will be assisting with that. So, again, thank you for those who attended, and we certainly hope that the community will be coming along to the other meetings and be part of the process. So, on to the fun stuff. Again, Awatton Creek, we have a great number of teachers here in the audience this evening. And one of the things that the Awatton staff there has been doing is really highlighting and encouraging their students to read and also to write. And so, they started bringing back morning announcements, and they've done it with a lot of flash and with special guests. So, at this time, we'd like to highlight one of the videos that was done and presented to the students. I've watched it several times. I've watched it several times, and it puts a big smile on my face every time. So.
Howdy, partners!
Hey, Mrs. Ockelbach!
Oh, well, last week, we were talking about Great Riders and how Great Riders form their letters. What in tarnation are you doing?
Well, I was working on a little ditty about how great our riders are here.
Oh, well, in that case, take it away!
All right. Here we go, Mrs. Ockelbach. I come from fourth grade hallway with a banjo on my knee. I'm going to Mrs. Ockelbach's, your riding horse's scene. You work so hard, the time is now, narrative you could write. Your words will blaze onto the page, ideas shine so bright.
OC riders, help please all write for me. Get your pencil sharpened and show what you can be.
I had a dream the other night when everything was still. I saw a student writing some paintings even now. A pencil grasp within his hand, ideas in his mind. He wrote a happy masterpiece, great pleasure even mine.
OC riders, we're calling out to you. Put your words on paper and show what you can do.
October month will soon be all, and then the look around. In the box outside of Ockelbach's, papers will be found. Teachers gather to read the word down within the pen. It will be exciting to see which kids will win.
What in our nation?
Oh, sure.
What's going on around here?
Sheriff scribes a lot.
I'm sheriff scribes a lot, and we got a lot of noise coming up around here. We can't have any of the starvices. What's going on?
Well, we were singing about the great riders we have here.
Great riders? Where?
All over the building.
Here at the OC?
You've got it.
Well, that's fantastic. Then you can carry on.
OC riders, we're calling out to you. Put your words on paper and show what you can do. OC riders, help please all write for me. Get your pencil sharpened and show what you can be.
Small reminder, Fridays.
Can we just point out that Mr. Dibler was actually playing the banjo, too?
That is correct. Mr. Dibler is an expert banjo player, and I'm so happy to see the banjo out in his classroom and that he brought that back and that our schools are doing things like this again for our students. It makes them definitely feel like part of a community. I know it takes a lot of work to put something like that together. So, thank you to the reading team. Thank you to Mr. Dibler for participating. And of course, Charlie Payne for being such a good sport. I would requ...
Sheriff scribes a lot.
Yeah, Sheriff scribes a lot. We would like to request that if the next time you have Charlie in there, that we get him something other than a paper hat. Because we were like, oh, why is Charlie wearing a paper hat? But, so, congratulations to all of you, and thank you for doing that for our students and for our own enjoyment. Because we were packing up. So, thank you. So, that is my report, Dr. Herring.
Thank you. For those that are standing there, plenty of seats up here if you want to make your way in. Don't be shy. There's a bunch over here as well. Unless you want to stand, it's fine. And I also just want to say, in regards to the workshop meeting that we had the other day, it was great being able to walk around the building, kind of get an idea of what it is that the administration comes to us, talking to us about what our buildings look like to actually be there. And you thanked a couple of people. I also want to thank the janitors that also were there, giving us the information. So, I really appreciate that. Okay. Next on the list is public comment, but nobody signed up. So, we're going to go next to Education Committee. Mr. Fiddler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. We have one item. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a statement of work with the Burks County Intermediate Unit to perform math assessment and curriculum design for the Exeter Township School District per the attached agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
I'm wondering if Dr. Haller could give us some background and context for this motion.
Sure, that would be my pleasure. So, a number of years ago, it's actually going back about eight years ago, we adopted a program called Math Investigations at the K through five level. During that time, our teachers have discovered that there were gaps in that program and that the program did not align to what is expected to our state standards. And we have come to the conclusion that that is why we've seen a lack of progress in our math PSSA scores, which is the standard that we're held to. So, thinking about how best to move forward in a realistic way, we believe that the best approach was to bring in Dr. Hoyt from the Burks County IU. He was one of the trainers that helped us when we initially brought the program in approximately eight years ago, maybe going on nine years ago, to do an assessment of where we are with that program and where we see the gaps are, and then start to create a new structure as to where we need to supplement that instead of people just kind of picking and choosing and then not being able to really track what's working and what's not working. So, that's our intent with working with Dr. Hoyt to help us lead us in the right direction with that work.
And will he be looking at each grade, math in each grade here?
He's going to be focusing on the elementary, that work with Math Investigations. We felt like that was the best place to begin.
And is Math Investigations also used in the higher grades?
No. So, in sixth grade, we use CPM, which is College Prep Math, which is a completely different program. But K through five, we use Math Investigations.
You knew I was going to ask about this. The number that I keep bringing up is the seventh grade PSSA assessments, which are now two years old. But as the board knows, and as many people I talk to in the community know, more than half of our seventh graders couldn't do math at grade level two years ago. How will, what Dr. Hoyt is going to do, how will that help our kids in all grades, but particularly the seventh graders from two years ago?
Yeah. So, thank you for asking that question. It's something that, you know, having a whole room full of teachers, it's a concern that we all share, and we've all been talking about. And we believe that this is a lack of foundational skills that our students are missing. And this is why, because they're missing those skills, as each year progresses, the struggle becomes... It becomes more difficult for them to be successful in math. So, we have to start somewhere. And so, that's why we are choosing to start at the elementary level. That's not to say that we haven't taken steps at the secondary level. One of the things that we have in place is IXL for our secondary students. It's a computer math program that will help remediate students who are struggling in math. I believe that the best approach at this time is to go back to what we have, and that's the data. And using the professional development time that we have to look at that data and then come back and make a plan about it, and then look at the data again and make a plan for what students are missing. Because I don't think that we even really had a full grasp of what that was because I don't know that we were taking the time that we needed to really dig into that data and then make a plan based on that data. So, our goal this year for our professional development is one of just being practical. And the practical part of that is giving teachers time to look at information and then plan accordingly, which is not an approach that we have taken in this district in the last several years. So, it's really getting back to basics and getting back to knowing where students are and then where we need them to be, and what are the things that we need to do in between to get them there. So, thank you for that question and opportunity to explain.
Thank you.
Dr. Haller, what is the timeframe from the time Dr. Hoyt starts to the time this curriculum is in our teachers' hands? What is the expected time of that?
I'm not sure, because I'm not sure of the scope of the deficit at this time. So, it's really having Dr. Hoyt come in and do that needs assessment first to see where we even need to begin. Because we all have ideas about where we need to go, but I think having someone who's not been entrenched in it, like we are, that we, like, those ideas are kind of clouding our judgment about what to do next. Getting fresh eyes on it, I'm not sure. So, I'd like to see what Dr. Hoyt has to say of the information he finds and then being able to come up with a timeline.
Great, thank you.
I also have a... Sorry, I just had a quick question. When you discuss the data points that you want to, you know, look at, exactly which ones are you talking about?
So, in October, what we did was we pulled our PSSA data from last year. And then the teachers at the K six level looked at their PSSA data, not just in math, but also in reading. And then we pulled the guidelines that come from the state regarding standards and eligible content. And we looked at that data compared to what needs to be taught per the state and then what information that we have actually been teaching that is in the Math Investigations textbooks. And we also did that with reading as well. The teachers worked in teams. And we basically came up with a scope and sequence about how to move forward in the short term. Then what we did was we made a plan at the three through sixth level to retest the students using a product that we have called STAR. So, all the students are going to be retested in both math and reading using the STAR assessment. And then in November, again, for practicality, because we can't just look at data and do nothing with it, we are going to come back in our teams, look at that STAR data, see what progress our students have made, and then go back and see if we need to realign anything for progress. One of the things that is a struggle right now for us is we don't have another professional development time now till March. So, while we are going to be continuing to assess students, teachers in this district don't have any more time to get together and work collaboratively. And if we want to see progress, we need to think about that more critically. And one of the things that we're currently doing is we're examining other school districts' calendars, and they have far more professional development time than what Exeter has. We don't have time like that built into our schedule. So, as part of this process of moving forward and looking at data and realigning information and testing students, we are going to be presenting a calendar that adds more, that requests that we add more professional development time so that way, teachers can assess students, come back and discuss, and then make sure that they're teaching what students need. So, we are moving forward, and we're very excited about it, and we had great feedback from our Professional Development Day in October. The teachers felt like the time was utilized appropriately, and they were able to get a lot done, and I just wish we had more time like that.
I have a second. I want to follow up with a question. So, the PSSAs that you said that we get in October, other districts get it in the summer, the aggregate data, and then they're able to look at that and then do STAR testing or whatever testing at the beginning of the school year. Why is it that we wait until, you know, like, October when it comes out to the parents? Why aren't we doing it sooner so that we're not from May clear to October, and then we're almost to Christmas by the time we know if our child is, say, behind or whatever?
So, we get the PSSA scores, like, students are tested in April in PSSAs, and then we get the scores usually around July.
Right.
We only get, so, as educators, we get that raw data earlier. But we don't get the student reports till the beginning of the school year.
Right.
And then we send that out. So, we send that out once we have it from the state.
Oh, no, I'm not asking why the... I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just wondered why, if we have the student data by the time school starts, why are we waiting till the end of October to test them? I guess to get, to see if they're, you know, if they're sliding or more ahead or et cetera.
So, we, so, it's not that we're testing them again in PSSAs, like, we only get PSSAs once.
No, I meant the STAR test.
Yeah, the STAR test. We give that as another level of benchmarking just to see where students are. And there is a correlation between PSSAs. We don't want to give the STAR tests too early. You know, we actually give it, we can give it in September. We can give it, I believe, to five times a year. But we specifically are giving it again in November to see if some of the realignment we have done has made some progress. So, that piece is flexible. The part, you can test kids as much as you see fit. The problem is, testing without conversation and change is simply testing.
Right.
So, if we want the assessment, if we want to use the assessment data appropriately, we need to have time for the teachers to look at it and make changes. And our struggle is that we only have our first Professional Development Day in October to be able to do it. Whereas other districts, they have a day in September.
Okay.
And I know that, and I feel as though, and I really appreciate this conversation and an opportunity to talk about this because I, as a parent myself, you know, our students are only back in school in August, and then we have the Labor Day break. And then, you know, parents don't want to automatically be slammed with a day off in September and then another day in October. And, you know, but in the same regard, you know, to have teachers be able to look at the information and then plan, there also should be a balance that we need to strike. And so, that's something that we're working through.
And is the STAR, just for my own information and others, is the STAR testing, I understand it's only ten questions. Is that correct? Or is it, like, how efficient is it? I mean, PSSAs is like, you know, a whole day of math, right? So, how good is the STAR that we, the STAR data that we use?
So, I, so, this is not scientific research.
Understood.
But I will tell you that my last year that I was the principal at Lorraine, I looked at our last STAR assessment that we gave, and there was a report that you could pull that predicts proficiency. And I had pulled that report, and then I compared it to the students' reports from PSSAs from third and fourth grade. And it was close. So, but again, you know, the data is only as good as what you deal with it. And I feel as though, at this point, we have a lot of good pieces in place in ELA to remediate our students. Math is an area that we're definitely lacking. But by bringing in Dr. Hoyt, I feel as though that his guidance will help us make good decisions about where we need to be as far as instruction and the addition of resources so that we're not just, like, trying to pull things and wasting money. You know, these things are expensive, and we want to make the best choices to meet student needs and, you know, fill the gaps that we're seeing. Thank you.
I'd like to commend Dr. Haller and the administration for the way that they are attacking what is acknowledged as a nationwide lapse in our responsibilities, not our responsibilities, but in our education of our children. You also have to recognize, Dr. Haller's been in for approximately three months. And after several years, I'll just say it, of less than noteworthy leadership, there are other things just as important to address as getting into the nuts and bolts of education. You can't lead an organization of several hundred good workers that have been subjected to poor leadership without first addressing that so that you have a team that can then move forward. I have every confidence in our educators, but they need a plan to address something that never happened before. And I think this is a wonderful first step of addressing those concerns that we all have. And I'm totally confident that this administration and our educators are going to be able to make up for that lapse we've had for the last two years and longer in our case. So, thank you.
I'd like to echo Mr. Quinter's comments, and also kudos to you for reaching out to the other school districts about the professional development. I think that's something else that I didn't see when I first joined the board, was simply picking up the phone or sending an email to ask what's going on in other districts. So, that's to the good. Finally, I'm wondering if throughout the process, if we could hear from Dr. Hoyt periodically, not just for the board, but for the public.
Yeah, I know that Dr. Hoyt would love to be able to come before the board and talk about what his findings are. Dr. Hoyt is also a parent in the community and very much invested. And I thank you for the kind words. The BCIU has been a great support. Dr. Hackman is an amazing leader, and she's been extremely helpful in this transition with, you know, giving us, you know, giving the ideas. But I just want to highlight the work of our educators, many of whom are in this room tonight are teachers. Because they're the ones, I know what I know, but I don't know what they know. So, their communication with me and sharing of their concerns is what has helped develop and craft a plan that we believe that we are all on board with and that we know that will be beneficial to our students. We know that will be um beneficial to our students. It's very, as coming from a building principal level, it's very upsetting. At the end of the um summer, when you get those PSSA scores. And you see that the level of proficiency of students. And I know the way that I felt as a building principal. And I wasn't the one standing in front of those students every day. And so, you know, to say that, um, you know, I've had teachers. From time to time in my in my office crying. Um, because they were so upset that they thought that they failed, you know, they failed students. And, you know, when you're pouring your heart and soul into this work because you care about kids. And then you don't see the progress that you expect, it's it's really, it's it's crushing because it's not in number. You know, to the community, when they see it in the paper, it's a number, but to these people in this room, it's a it's a child. Um, so they they are leading the conversation about how how we can do better. Um, and that's that's important that we we listen, we listen to them, so thank you.
Just to piggyback on Dr. Heller's comments about assessment in general and about um feedback from our educators. One of the things that we have learned in a the past few months is that. While we have some of those larger indicators like PSSAs and. Those broader nets like STAR assessments, one of the things that's been missing in our cycle of assessment. Is more diagnostic and prescriptive assessments that give us more real time data. About how students are making progress. And without our teachers having that kind of information, they're not as easily able to pivot and adjust their instruction. To better meet the needs of the students in real time. So it was actually our reading team, um, our reading specialists and our intervention specialists in the district who kind of brought that to our attention. Which we immediately recognized was actually it's a really huge gap. In our cycle of assessment that we're doing to give us appropriate feedback on how to adjust our instruction. So again, that's sort of that collaborative sort of conversation that we're trying to continue to encourage to say. Okay, we have some really big holes to fill here, not just in the instruction, but in the assessment. And how can we garner tools and resources to be able to do that?
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Concludes my report, Dr. Herring.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Personnel Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, I originally was supposed to be absent for this meeting due to a work obligation, so Mrs. Schaefer has prepared today's report.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following resignations, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments. For administrative staff, A, the district is designating its school safety and security coordinator. As primary liaison and law enforcement designee for the purpose of providing information related to law enforcement matters subject to regulations. Per the attached memorandum of understanding between the Exeter Township School District and the Exeter Township Police Department.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Okay, item B, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments. Um, item B, which is the designation of the Director of Technology and Absence of the Safety School Coordinator. Um, to take his place in item A if he's not there and Dr. Heller, after the vote, could you then provide more information?
Second, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Dr. Heller, maybe during discussion you could talk about uh about A and B and what that. You know, e- exactly what that means for us and and why we need to do it.
Calling the vote first or we want?
No, I think we'll do it, I think we should do it during discussion.
During discussion, yeah.
Uh, so one of the uh portions of um. Mr. Seidel's job description that's really important is the ability to work collaboratively with our law enforcement agencies. To be able to handle evidence and turn over evidence to um law enforcement agencies as necessary. Related to incidents that occur on campus. And so that's really what item A is designating, it's really designating him as the law enforcement designee for the district. Um, and essentially that allows him to do, as I said, which is turn over evidence as necessary. We need that designation because there are certain um laws and regulations. That prohibit school districts from turning over records that are considered educational records. And a student's discipline record is considered an educational record. So if there's evidence related to that discipline, it's part of that student's record. And um typically, we are not able to just turn that over to the law enforcement agencies. Unless we have someone who's designated as a law enforcement designee who can actually perform that function for us. So our first job was to get Mr. Seidel's um position approved and then to approve him in this role to be able to do that. And then, of course, you know, in the in the instance that Mr. Seidel. Um, gets the uh opportunity to take a vacation or needs to take some time off for any reason. We wanted to have a backup on schedule to be able to do that because, as you know, that's when things happen, when people take a day off. So we designated our Director of Technology as the backup person in that role.
And and if I could ask, i- is there an advantage to having the Director of Technology be the backup or is it? Just a good choice?
Good choice for a couple of reasons, um, one, a lot of times the evidence is video evidence, so that's one of them. The other reason is, um, you don't wanna designate someone who is an administrator who's involved in any way in the disciplinary process for students. And potentially in the pro- uh the expulsion process for students as well. So that eliminates a lot of us on the team, um, and leaves uh people that are in the role of like Director of Technology to be able to do that.
Thank you. Uh, que- the the motion begs the question, who is the designee before we hired Mr. Seidel?
There wasn't one, our law enforcement agencies were forced to subpoena those records.
So we we never had one, is that?
Okay, if no further discussion about that, then all in favor, say aye. Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Item C, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments, Kristen Graham as Assistant Business Manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
I'd just like to say, I feel like we should have a script when we appoint someone in there here, cause you never know like when we should interview some. But um I'd just like to take a moment to welcome uh Kristen, she's here in the audience. Uh, so we're very excited to have her come on board. Um, she's currently in the new handover. Okay, just handover, uh, school district, um. And uh we feel as though that her skill set that she's bringing will certainly be. Um, welcome in the business office and we're just very much excited and looking forward to welcoming her to our team. And um I'm gonna embarrass her mentor, um, he very graciously came up tonight um to support her. Uh, so, you know, welcome to, welcome to Exeter.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments, A, extracurricular staff.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
And last for the Personnel Committee, um, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following changes of status. A, under certified staff and um, first certificate staff and support staff, A.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Is that all, Mrs. Schaefer?
That is it for the personnel on the voting.
Thank you very much, um, next would be public comment, but no one signed up. So, um, let's see, I guess that concludes our November special voting meeting and I declare the meeting adjourned. Will now continue to our Wednesday, November second, Exeter Township School District Committee of a Whole Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Fyke, can you please take a roll call?
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Jason Mel.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter. Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson. All present.
We're all still here, so we're gonna move on to the meeting minutes, if no one minds, they're attached. Does anybody have any changes or discussion they would like? To make regarding meeting minutes for the Board Committee of a Whole Meeting October fifth or the Board Voting Meeting October seventeen? Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to the agenda, there's no amendment to the agenda tonight. So next would be a board recognition. Uh, Dr. Heller.
So I would just like to congrat- congratulate uh Josie Whitney, who is here in the audience, I'm I'm not gonna read exactly what's on here. Um, I'm just gonna share um what Josie has done and and thank Karen Hodge for recognizing that and submitting Josie's work. Um, to be recognized um by this by the state. Um, so, a number of years ago, um, we had a a family at Lorraine. Um, that we we all loved and um we're very excited uh to welcome their their son. Um, to Lorraine as a kindergartner um in in a couple of years and this is a family that was was very active. Um, it was shared with us one day um that they um found that their their little guy, um, Jason. Um, had um was had cancer, he had neuroblastoma, which is a very aggressive form of cancer. And he um spent the last year of his life um at CHOP. Fighting fighting that with everything that he had. And it it took a a toll um really on the Lorraine teachers. Who loved this family just because we just, they were the great, mom's name is Ivy. Um, but it took a toll on on everyone to see this family go through the struggle. And um Josie Whitney, being who she was, um, was of course very supportive of the family. And uh one of the things that we learned about CHOP that that year. Was that um because kids are are so compromised. Um, that they are given Play-Doh to play with and they can only play with it one time and then they have to throw it out. And you can imagine budgets are tight, um, so, you know, a lot of times they they were relying on donations. So Josie took it upon herself um to start a a Play-Doh drive. Um, so at this time, Josie, I'm gonna turn it over to you to go up there to the microphone. To talk about everything that you have done over the years. Um, to make us such a huge success and girl knows the number of of kids and families you've impacted.
September, if he, um, the neuroblastoma and of course, we were all. And um, so, what happened was. Boss of my own that year, away in January. And the phone call that Jason had passed away from his cancer. It happened to be on my dad's birthday. And so that was a very, very emotional day for me. And um, just so happens that Chrissy Heller came in my room for an observation that day. And after the observation was over, we did walk across the street to the Hagman's house. And was with the family and that's where Ivy said that he loved to play with. So at that time. That that they need. The one thing that Ivy said was, I want his name to be kept alive, he will never walk. And so I thought, well, I can do, I can do this in honor of Jason. So the following year, I reached out to mom. Would this be possible? Are you, are you going to allow me to do this? And she, of course, was, yes, I will absolutely do this. The first year, I think I asked for five hundred cans. And I think, I have it all written down, but I think. Fifty-one cans, I thought, wow, that's great. And then the next year, I upped it to like a thousand and and then fifteen hundred. Growing and growing and growing and this year. Said, why don't you go for ten thousand? What? No way! And we ended up getting twenty-two thousand cans just in one year. Us come around this year, would they be willing to put a flyer out in their own community and have a big shift through? So I'm challenging you to do the same thing. You're the faces of Exeter Township School District and I would be honored if you could also give to this Play-Doh drive. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Education Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring, uh, we have uh item A, which is a conference request, there'll be three. Um, that we'll be moving ahead to the uh next meeting. Uh, field trips within the sixty mile radius, uh, I won't read them all, but this is just uh information. These will not require a board vote. Item C, field trips beyond the sixty mile radius, uh, one is the Exeter Ski and Snowboard Club will be traveling to J Peak in J, Vermont. In February and the Junior High School, seventh and eighth grade. Coral, uh, does that, should that be chorus? Anybody? Or coral group perhaps, anyway, a little bit of editing there. Will be traveling to Nazareth, that might be Nazareth. Does that, does that make sense? Maybe. Yeah, I I I I've never heard of a Nazareth. Senior High School to participate in PMEA District Ten Intermediate Songfist Songfest on February sixteenth. And a snow date would be February seventeenth. Uh, that will require board action in uh three weeks. Item D is the Reiften Robotics Coding Introduction to First Lego League and um. That will require, or will it not? I guess not a motion. Again, Dr. Heller, I wonder if we could have some background on that or context?
Sure, so, um, as you know, we have a great education foundation. And one of the things that the ECF does is they support. Um, different activities uh through money that they raise, but also through something called EITC money. Um, which is money that comes through the state. Um, EITC money can only be used on very specific things. And one of the things that it can be used for are opportunities like um Legos and robotics. Um, so this project is is something that um they they are funding. Um, at the Reiften Building to have a robotics club. Uh, Maggie, Dr. Wright, Maggie Wright is in the audience, she's she's been spearheading. She's, she's been spearheading that and I know it's been a lot of work and I thank her for doing that. Um, but she has been working, um, with the Reiften team and ECF, uh, to organize, uh, this, this project and get this club underway. So thank you, um, Dr. Wright, um, for your efforts, um, on this project.
Thanks, Dr. Heller. Uh, item E is a tuition agreement with, um, Vista School. I won't read the motion, but it's a pretty, it looks like a pretty standard, um, there we go, pre-standard agreement for a student for the 2022-2023 school year, an annual tuition rate of, uh, $61,000 and change. Uh, item F is an agreement with the Chester County Intermediate Unit to provide, uh, school psych, psychological services at a daily rate of $787.73 for no more than six evaluations per month. And finally, item G, an agreement with the BCIU, for, uh, student services, uh, at a cost of 89,000 and change. Is that, um, I think I know what the answer is going to be. Is that an annual thing, Mrs. Harris?
Yeah. Um, so that's our cost of force, estimated cost for services from the BCIU for services that they provide for students in Special Education Force or students that have 504 agreements. Typically, they provide, uh, for most of the county, um, services for students who have hearing impairments and students who have visual impairments and several other areas. Uh, this cost for this year, our estimated services, is roughly the same as it was last year, but I don't want to mislead anybody that that is cost management. That is simply based on the types of students that we currently have in the district and the needs that they have. So for example, I could get a student who moves in tomorrow who requires full Braille instruction and that would greatly alter this cost.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, um, I would ask that the items requiring board action be moved ahead to the next meeting. And that concludes my report.
I have a question. Sorry. Uh, number F, the agreement with Chester County Intermediate. Is this for a specific student or is this a per diem? And if it is per diem or a specific student, why are we using Chester County versus BCIU? And why wouldn't we be using our own school psychologist?
We do use our own school psychologist to the max, um, which is sometimes the issue. So this is for overflow evaluations that we have. So school psychologists have timelines that they have to meet in order to complete an evaluation. They have 60 days. And if they have too many referrals at one time, they can't just simply miss those deadlines. So we, uh, often contract for overflow evaluations. You see it's written, it's no more than six evaluations, um, per month because that's what I've kind of deemed that we don't need any more than that in terms of help. As to why we use the CCIU instead of the BCIU, we do have an agreement to use the BCIU as well, but they are very short-staffed and are not usually able to provide that service. So over the past few years, we've had better luck, um, with the CCIU. They've had more availability of school psychologists.
Thank you. And what about the rates? I'm confused as to why there's two rates. So is it $787.73 per day and then an additional $85 power if they're in a meeting?
Correct.
So if they're here for an hour, we have to pull them, pay them for the full day?
So it's 787, uh, for a daily rate for the evaluation piece. And then there's a separate rate for when they come for a meeting. So one is, uh, testing and evaluation and report writing. That's a daily rate. And then the other rate is simply if they come to the meeting to explain the report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. No further discussion. We'll move to Finance Facilities and Audit Committee, Mr. Mel.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, item A, uh, first one there is the Act 1 Resolution for the 2023-2024 budget year. This is a resolution agreeing that the board will not exceed the adjusted index of 5.3%. And if we, go ahead, sorry, wait for a second. Oh, my gosh. I'm really out of it yet. Um, sorry, that special voting meeting really screwed me up. Um, the, um, you know, so the, eh, the, uh, Act 1 Resolution, if this does, um, get approved, what this would do is, um, absolve us of having to, uh, go through, uh, any of the preliminary budget issues that are mentioned within the resolution.
And if I could just take a moment, if you're interested in learning about Act 1, you can go on our website and look at the PowerPoint and it explains the, the Act 1 Resolution and the, the how it impacts us, uh, with the budget.
Mr. Feig, maybe you can explain, because I know this question comes up every year among some of our, our taxpayers, that this is not an assumption or an indication of what the Exeter tax, um, rate will be next year or the increase will be, that this, this is, this is a legal thing that we need to do.
This is just a legal ease that we're saying we're not going for an exception to go over the 5.3%. We're not going to go out for referendum for, uh, an increased tax. We're not. The exceptions are special ed, extra special ed costs, um, retirement and construction. So we're not, we, we don't qualify for any of those because we don't expect to have any of those. So basically you're saying we're going to stay within our indexes. We can be zero, we can be minus, we can be plus, but we can't be over 5.3%. Uh, this allows us to then develop a budget through the year. Uh, that does not have to be put on a, a referendum for tax increase in May. Um, it gives us time to actually see what we're going to get from the state. Because if you, if you go out for referendum, uh, you have to have a budget publicized by January and six months ahead of the, the actual adoption. It's a lot in the air. So this basically allows us to go through the whole process and, and, uh, have public meetings all the way through to the time you adopt a, a, um, proposed budget in May. And then you have to advertise that for another 20 days before you can adopt the final budget. So this is just saying, town, ensuring the state, we're not going to go above that index. That's all.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other discussion? Okay, moving on to item B. We have the, uh, sponsorship advertising rates. Um, believe this is for the winter season that's coming up. And I don't know if we had anybody that was going to discuss this. Was, Mrs. Breton? Great. Did you want to come up and say anything? I would love it. Yes, thank you.
So, uh, everybody has something in front of them. Um, so as you guys are aware, uh, earlier this year, you guys were considering, um, working with an outside agency to, um, recruit advertisers, um, to fill the gap that, you know, I think has existed since before the pandemic, um, in trying to bring some extra revenue into the district. Um, so what you have before you are just some proposed rates. Uh, previously, the district, uh, Mr. Legath had pretty much handled this, I think exclusively on his own. Um, and he worked mostly to do seasonal advertising. So you would pay $500 for the fall. You'd pay $500, you know, to have your banner hung somewhere within the district. Um, you know, for each individual season. One thing that I've tried to do is open up other, um, ways to advertise within the district, such as, um, adding a footer to Parents Square messages that I send. So those would be district-wide messages. Um, I also brought off all of the advertising that was on the athletic website, which was all third-party. And, um, we have opportunity to place our own advertising on there. Uh, there's, I've also opened up advertising opportunities within the other schools because we have a lot of traffic at our elementary schools, um, at Reiften. So, um, you know, just kind of opening it up and also turning it more into a school year-length, um, sponsorship so that we're not chasing advertisers every season. Yeah. Not sure if you guys have any questions about anything that's in here specifically.
I don't have any questions, but, uh, Mrs. Breton, I do appreciate the time that you put into this. It, it looks really great. And I know this was something we discussed earlier, uh, this year about trying to ramp back up the, uh, the marketing and advertising efforts after it kind of slid off the radar from, uh, from COVID. So thank you for your efforts.
Absolutely. And just, uh, a note, um, you know, if, if this is approved, well, we're going to, what my intention is, is to try to go forward with continuing with those seasonal opportunities because we don't have a full year and then really hitting this stuff hard for that school year, you know, the school-length, um, sessions over the summer. Um, yeah, I've already started to work on getting together a list of, um, people that we do business with, as well as other, um, you know, small, small companies, uh, larger companies, dentists, you know, people within the district that I think would be interested in possibly advertising in, in the district.
I just wanted to add, um, before the fall season started, the board approved the fall rates only until we came back with recommendations. So I'm hoping to get this on the voting agenda so we have rates for the winter and spring and then for next year too.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Herring, the, I, I do have a couple of extra things I just want to point out for information, uh, before I finish with my committee report. Uh, it, it was reported that, um, at our finance committee meeting that we, uh, that we did have last Tuesday, um, that we would be reaching out to PSBA Energy Solutions. Uh, Mr. Feig would be trying to arrange an initial consultation for the board. Um, and that was a discussion following the, uh, voting meeting. Uh, that was a 5-4 vote to reject this older initiative. Also at that meeting, it was announced that, uh, Mr. Feig did lock in, uh, 7.2 cents per kilowatt hour for electricity through IGS. And that contract runs June 2023 through December 2024. And, Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Personnel, Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes, um, it is recommended that the following items be moved to the next voting meeting. Resignations A and B. Appointments A. I'm sorry, appointments. Under Support Staff A, it is recommended that, uh, under Administrative Staff, the School Board Treasurer, um, just rec, we're recommending it be removed and moved to either, um, next month or December meeting. For Kristen.
Something did.
Yeah, something.
If you want, I, I can add that the board reorganizes in December and this is the board appointed and she doesn't start till middle December. So we do have a voting meeting to do it then. So I just felt it'd be wise, even though it's the same board, you reorganize. So it'd be wise to have a new board or leadership as it's time. Thank you.
Yeah, so move Administrative, uh, I'm sorry, Support Staff A, uh, Certified Substitutes A. And then under Change of Status, Support Staff A. Food Service Staff A. Guest Teachers A. And then a Course Requirement, or Course Request is recommend the board of school directors approves the following list of course requests. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Policy Committee, Dr. Hemberger.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, we have three, uh, policies on the agenda for the November voting me, voting meeting. Uh, um, two policies are listed for second reading. Um, and an additional policy would be first reading. And I'll let, um, Mrs. Harris talk a little bit about, um, the changes to, um, Policy 805.2.
Thank you, Dr. Hemberger. Um, regarding Policy 805.2, um, we made some adjustments based on new revisions, based on Act 55. So some of these policies that we just recently did around school security, as is the nature with legislation, um, have changed again as a result of Act 55 and new requirements were added. That's why we're always kind of in this vicious cycle of policy review. Um, but according, for this policy in particular, um, for school security personnel, there's some stronger language that was added and based on Act 55 around the board's responsibility to designate a school safety and security coordinator. Of course, that expectation has been around since Act 44 of 2018. However, there's been some questions regarding compliance across the Commonwealth um, and how that role has actually played out. And you've heard us talk a lot about that role and about how when it initially started, um, districts were assigning it as a, you know, sort of a part-time job or a job that was attached to other people's responsibilities. And Act Phil, 55 is really pushing the notion that this really needs to be a dedicated position. Um, so kudos to you for moving in the right direction in terms of reaffirming that for our district. Um, there's also a requirement now that if for some reason, um, we should, uh, lose our safety and security coordinator, the district, uh, has to appoint a new one within 30 days, even if that's an interim appointment. Um, and then there's some language in there as well regarding re, new required training for the safety and security coordinator that is being developed as we speak. Um, as things go, the legislation comes out, then everybody figures out what that actually means. Then everybody figures out what training is actually needed. Then the training is developed and then it's rolled out. So they're in the finishing stages of developing that training and then we'll be rolling it out. Um, and Mr. Seidel will be participating in that training. I will also be participating in that training because you'll see in this policy, there are some places where we've actually inserted my title as well in conjunction with the Safety and Security Coordinator because there are still pieces of school safety that I will be heavily involved in. So we're sharing some of these responsibilities that are delineated there, um, with Mr. Seidel actually, um, holding the title. So that's it for Policy, um, 805.2.
Can I just make a comment about that?
Yes, please.
Uh, I, I'm looking down and, um, I'm not sure exactly what page it is on the policy, but it's under Guidelines. And it says, uh, it's under School Security Guards. It says the district shall employ, contract for. Um, are we employing or are we contracting for? Are we doing both?
That gives us the option to do both right now. We just have one employed at the high school. Um, and his title actually isn't Security Guard. It's more of a Support Security Staff position. Um, and I'm glad you brought that part of the policy up, Dr. Hemberger, because this policy is actually a bigger policy. It's longer. There's two whole other sections here that aren't in our policy currently that are related to other school security personnel, which is the SRO, the School Resource Officer, and the SPO, the School Police Officer. So we don't have those pieces embedded right now because we don't have those positions or anything akin to those positions in here. But because we do have something close to a school security guard, we put that piece of the policy in.
Okay, so just to clarify then, that, that language will change that the district shall employ and/or contract for, uh, one or more school security guards. Is that right?
That is the language. That gives us the option to do both. Yeah, yeah. And, and like I said, right now we have one employed through our Support Staff bargaining unit.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Um, the other policy I'd just like to talk a little bit about, uh, or have you talked about is the, uh, early admission policy, uh, Policy 201. Uh, at our last meeting, um, there were some suggested changes to that policy. Uh, maybe if you could just kind of walk us through what those changes are in, uh, 201.
Yes, so, uh, if you recall, uh, at our last meeting, we discussed 201 and discussed the, um, idea of early admissions. And the district does engage in consideration of early admissions to kindergarten, um, based on a process. It has, you know, that has been sort of a past practice here in the district. Um, but when we looked at the language that we were presenting in the policy, we felt like it wasn't super clear that we were embracing that process of early admissions and clearly stating to families that we were embracing that. So we added an additional paragraph in there to indicate that, that there is an early admissions process, um, and that families should reach out to their building administrators if they were interested in ga, in engaging in that process of having their, um, child considered for early admissions to kindergarten. And then Dr. Flam's office, um, is. And then Dr. Flam's office um, is working on the administrative regulation for that. There is one in existence that existed pre-pandemic. We stopped early admissions process during COVID, um, be- during the pandemic because of the inability for folks to come on campus and work with students over the summer and assess them in any way. Um, we took that moratorium off and now Dr. Flam is refreshing that um, administrative regulation.
Thanks, Mrs. Harris. I, I am, I had suggested uh, that maybe um, putting a due date uh, in terms of when parents need to submit that letter to the building principal would be necessary. But I think what I'm hearing is that that's gonna be part of the administrative regulations that will accompany this policy.
You got it. And it has been in the air in the past and we'd like to leave it there. But the other place it will live is on our website, under our registration information, where parents go to even look for kindergarten registration information. So typically kindergarten registration, the technical part of that process happens through my office and we start that process in January. And when that goes live, you'll see the information there regarding early admissions deadlines as well.
Okay. And, and I, and from my perspective, I think would be valuable to, I know, I know we sort of have a little bit of confusion uh, per um, um, now and then about where those administrative regulations are housed, you know? Are they available and displayed to the public? I think in this particular case, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have it listed here as an attachment to this policy, whether it's a hyperlink or actually an attached, something attached, just so parents can go directly to that when they read the policy.
I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
The other thing, just a, just a um, just a comment in terms of just the process. When, when we add language to policy for a, you know, a second reading or something like that, could we bold that so our board members can see what language was, was added from one reading to the next? I think that would be helpful for our board. And I know we do that with, with revised policy. I know PSBA, PSBA helps us with that too, but uh, I think that would be helpful in this case as well.
Agreed.
And I'd, I'd like to see this go back on for first reading if we could, since we made a, a fairly major um, addition to the policy. So first reading for uh, for our November voting. And I, I think we're familiar with the other policy, at least we've been through that before, from services policy, we've talked about that in committee of the whole already. That's due for second reading. I don't, I don't know whether any of the board members have any questions or comments about that, but if you do, that would be a good time. If not, if not, then that's some of my report. Thanks, Dr. Hearing.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Uh, next is public comment, but no one signed up. So we're going to be moving forward the following items. So our number twenty-first voting meeting, the meeting minutes. Item four A. C, E, F, and G. Item five A. B. Item six A, B, C, and D, and item seven A.
Clarification. Um, under Personnel, under B, Administrative, A, that's gonna be taken out.
So it would be item six B. Support Staff A.
Yep.
But we're removing Administrative Staff A.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
Dr. Hearing, I have a couple of things. First off, I wanna wish our athletics organizations luck as they move on uh, or advance in their seasons. And congratulations to those of them that have ended their seasons already. I did want to say something about the um, the budget meetings that we have scheduled. And it, it's really to our community. You know, it's safe to say that many of us get our information from social media these days. Uh, it's very difficult as board members to filter all that information that comes through social media and there are a lot of different social media platforms. We, we really feel that this is an important need for us as a board to be able to reach out to the community. Uh, it's a great way for us in administration to have dialogue directly with the community and I think we've set those meetings up in different locations and often enough that we can start to really feel as though we're prepared as we go into the budget season. So, you know, I, I'm just, I'm reaching out to the community to say, if you want to be heard and, and we want to hear you, you know, please come out, engage in these dialogues. If you can't come to a board meeting, if you can't come to a board meeting, you can email us. Uh, it's important for us to hear you and, and you know, these planning processes are very cumulative. So by the time we get into that May-June timeframe, you know, we're working through a lot of these things that we need to do between now and then. So I would appreciate everybody trying to fill those rooms as we have these meetings month to month. Thank you.
This is my seventeenth budget. I predated Act One. Not once in those seventeen times have we even approached that uh, not to exceed the limit that the uh, state has put on us. I've been accused often of being rather jaded and I probably am. That's the right you have as you get old. But every year I read about why can't the school board adhere to its budget? Every year we have a different budget. You're being the op- offered the opportunity right now to come in before that budget is adopted and make your recommendations. If you don't take advantage of the opportunity, please don't call me with why can't you stick to your budget? If we've adopted something that you don't like. I appreciate it. Thanks, payers. I am very angry every time I pay my taxes. And every time I've raised taxes, I feel like I'm shooting myself in the foot. And my wife reminds me of that. So please, again, I am wholeheartedly uh, requesting that if you have any interest in this, please come and make an input because you will be listening to it. So, thank you.
Okay, could, um, just on that topic, could we uh, re- remind the public when the next budget meeting is? I believe it's.
Off the top of, off the top of my head, I believe it's November thirtieth.
Yeah.
And it's, yep, and it's revenue. The topic is revenue.
There we go. Perfect. So November thirtieth at the senior high, if the public is wanting to attend to hear more about revenue or any other topic that comes up on the budget. Um, Dr. Haller, where would they, where would they go? Would they go into the main entrance of the high school?
Yep, they can go right into the main entrance of the high school. Uh, we'll be meeting in the school's library. Uh, we'll start with a, a building tour and um, talk about the capital projects um, that are at the senior high school. And then we'll go into our uh, meeting session where we'll talk about revenue. And, and for our school district, the revenue is the local taxpayers. Um, that's where our primary funding comes from. Um, but we do get funding from the federal government and we get funding from the state. Um, and one of the, the pieces that we want to really hone in on is that those things, the, that money that we get is earmarked for certain things. So the board doesn't have the discretion to just use it all for one thing or offset the cost for something else. They have to use it for very specific purposes. And, and it's important that the public, public know that, that you're, you're tied to, to follow um, the law on how to use this grant money.
Just to be clear though, Dr. Haller, if, if a member of the community would like to come to one of these meetings and maybe they can't come to another, or they wanna talk to us about something that's on budget topic but not specifically on this meeting's agenda, you know, we certainly welcome, welcome them to come out because we want to hear from you. We want you to come, you know, when it's convenient to your schedule.
Sure. And this is why we, again, we ha- we're having them monthly and then they'll align to what the topic is on the committee of the whole agenda. Um, and we, we're encouraging people to come out and to, to participate um, because we think it's important for everyone to have an, an understanding of how um, challenging it is to put together a, a budget of this size um, based on the funding that, that we receive. And there's, there's a lot of important, difficult decisions that needs to be made um, by the board with the budget that's presented.
And, and I, I would just add as well, Mrs. Breeden had, uh, she's also been writing up uh, a summary of those meetings, publishing it to Parent Square. They're also accessible on the website. So there is a particular meeting that someone was interested in, but they cannot attend. Uh, there is information that, that would be going out in three, two as well.
Just one quick question. Will we get to see the boiler?
I got to see the boiler at the junior high.
Well, I'm hoping we get to see it at high school.
It is.
So we.
Very, very, very impressive.
Anyone else?
I just wanna say thank you um, for the, the tack up there and then the artwork. It looks beautiful. And thank you to the students that made it.
I agree. I was just gonna say that. The artwork is perfect. Thank you.
Check out the cases too.
Okay. I'd also like to remind everyone to please go out and vote Tuesday, November eighth, so you can be heard. If nothing else, good evening, everyone. Our next meeting will be Monday, November twenty-first.